Okay.
Are we set now?
Okay. We're all set.
Okay, alright. Let me start the meeting of the March sixteenth, meeting of the South Borough Zoning Board of Appeals with a statement from the agenda pursuant to chapter twenty of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-one, an act relative to extending certain COVID nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law on June sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. This meeting will be conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance by members of the public will be permitted. It may be watched or or people may participate in the meeting remotely with a meeting link at www.southbirlot.com/remotemeetings. Okay, so, uh, welcome to the, uh, the, uh, ZBA meeting for the sixteenth. We had one application on the agenda that has been withdrawn, that is for Seventeen Main Street by Saint Mark's School. So we will not be discussing that in the, in the call this evening. So if that's what you dialed in for, uh, you don't need to, you don't need to stay, stay on because there, there is no hearing on it. Um, I don't, I don't know if I, that I see need to, to permit anybody in, like, there's no, there's no real discussion, right? So we can just move right on to the, to the agenda. So item one is approval of meeting minutes dated January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. So, um, I don't know, they're, that, they're, they're pretty uneventful, uh, meeting minutes. I don't know if everybody had the opportunity to take a look at them. It would not take much time if you, if you didn't already. Uh, it's basically saying, um, you know, like I said, there was no hearing in there. So the meeting minutes are essentially approval of the meeting minutes from October twentieth and then discussion of the next meeting for February sixteenth, which we agreed to move to this evening because there were no applications. So again, it's, it's pretty uneventful, so. Of every, so I don't know if there's any discussion from any of the members when it comes to the minutes.
I just wanted to state that I did find a, just a small clerical error at the end. Um, the list of documents, I incorrectly, uh, put ZBA meeting minutes October twentieth of two thousand and twenty-two. So I did update that to reflect two thousand and twenty-one.
Okay, alright, alright, so for, for us to, uh, uh, vote to approve the minutes, it'll have to be as amended.
Yes.
Okay. So if there is no discussion and nobody has any concerns with minutes, then I think we should, uh, take a motion to approve the minutes as modified by Kelly.
I'll move that.
Okay, alright, okay, we have a, a motion to approve the meeting minutes, uh, with, uh, the edits from Kelly. We have a second, so all in favor, uh, respond with aye. Doris?
Aye.
Debbie?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And Jamie?
Aye.
Alright, and that's aye for me as well. So the, the meeting minutes, um, from January nineteenth are approved. The next item we have on the agenda is discussion of clerical changes to special permit and variance applications. So is that an update that, where you can share some information, Kelly?
Yes, so, um, do, upon further review, it's actually specifically regarding the special permit application. Uh, it looks as though the variance application had already been, um, updated and amended. But what, uh, we were running into as far as in the, uh, special permit process is that the paperwork reflects, uh, the resident needing ten, uh, hard copies of the special permit application and, um, my, uh, suggestion is to change that to two hard copies so that the town clerk will have a hard copy and then we can have a hard copy and then if they wanted a third, they could have that. But having ten, when we have everything electronically at this time, doesn't really make a lot of sense. Um, that was, you know, the one, uh, change that I thought would, you know, make, make a lot of sense as well as, um, the building inspector slash zoning officer's opinion on the activity. Uh, it states that it must be provided with the application, but what we've been doing is kind of, um, having a little bit of a informal meeting, um, with the resident prior to submitting the application so that we have a little bit of an idea of if it's going to be a variance, if it's going to be a special permit. Um, and so my idea was just to put, you know, after having a formal meeting, we would accept the, um, the, uh, zoning officer's opinion on it. And then the last change is just that it used to be that the, um, resident or applicant was the one to send the hearing notices to the abutters. Um, and we have changed it to me being the ZBA assistant, I send that out. They still are responsible for obtaining the list of abutters, but they provide that in the application and then we send it out for them. Just a better way to keep track and make sure that it's, gets done.
Yeah, I'm, I'm honestly, I'm a little surprised it was ever that way, that the, the applicant had the responsibility to notify the abutters. That's, that's surprising to me.
Yeah.
You don't want people to show up, you don't send them.
Yeah, right, exactly, yeah. We forgot to do that. Um, okay, uh, any, any concerns with the change from ten copies to two? I, I, I endorse what Kelly's saying, we're, we do everything electronically any, anyway. I don't, I can't see the need for ten copies of the, of the thing, it's a waste of paper.
Yeah.
Yep, I agree.
Okay. Alright, um, was there?
Yeah, I commented on the second one, um, Dave, if I can move to the second, oh, sorry, are you done with, everybody okay with the first?
I, I was just, I was just, uh, I was just, you know, recalling her other items regarding that meeting and, uh, and that language, so go ahead, Debbie.
Well, my only thought was that there could be a proponent like a developer that doesn't need a meeting. And so I wouldn't want to put in language that says that they have to have a meeting. Um, is it flexibly kind of written, um, so that you don't have to have a meeting if the applicant doesn't need a meeting? Or how's that, how does that go?
Well, the way that it's stated is that a copy of the opinion of the proposed activity, um, must be provided with the application. And like you said, a developer is, you know, somebody that's not necessarily going to need to have that formal meeting, but when it comes to a resident that's never gone through the process before and doesn't necessarily know which way to go, um, we figured it made sense to have them come in, I don't know how we would, how we can kind of.
Well, I think, I think you're just, you're just looking for some flexibility in the statement, Debbie, right? Like either a, a formal meeting or, uh, the opinion of the, uh, the, the zoning, zoning board enforcer, right?
Yeah, because is this, is this the opinion of the building inspector with a denial that it's going to be, go to the ZBA for appeal?
Correct.
Oh, I see, so that shouldn't even be in the application because the proponent won't have that until the building inspector looks at it, right?
Yeah, so that's kind of what we were, uh, trying to figure out what the best way to word that is.
I see.
Hi Kelly, um, could you just read that to me and, and say must? Um, suggested, can we just get that word replaced? Or flexible?
Yeah, suggest, yeah, it's because it says must and it's like underscored and like out, you know, italicized. So I think that's where a lot of people see that and they're like, well, you know, how do I, do I get this opinion when I've never even talked to the,
Right.
I've never talked with Laurie before.
Right, it seems more like I should, than, than I'm gonna shall.
Yeah, I like that, that, that thought.
I think that makes a lot of sense.
Okay.
Yep.
Oh, that's a good, those are good points.
So I'll update that and I'll send it all out, um.
Okay, so we'll, we'll get a, we'll get a, the, uh, written copy of it for our review, okay, that makes sense.
Kelly, did we, we, could, could you reread the third, uh, point? So I think we covered the first two and then.
Yeah.
So. Comments on the third point.
The way that it's written right now, um, is the applicant or their agent or representative is responsible for sending with confirmation of delivery, copies of the notice of the hearing to all the abutters on the certified abutters, abutters list at least two weeks prior to the hearing. Documentation of this mailing and delivery receipts for the abutter notices must be submitted to the building department prior to the hearing.
Right.
And so I think it, it hasn't come up with me because this, I haven't had a hearing yet, but, um, this was kind of the advice of Katie Berry, who was formerly in this position, uh, that it made a lot more sense for the ZBA assistant to be the one to send those mailings out.
Yeah.
The only thing I see about that is I think it still is the responsibility of the applicant, but that you're doing it for them. So I mean, is that word, do we know if that wording is anywhere else, like in a, the, you know, it seems like that's almost legal language.
Like in the state code?
Yeah.
Uh, I know in other municipalities that I deal with, the, the municipality takes care of it.
Okay.
It, it's definitely mixed, it's a mixed bag. So I see, I've, many towns that still say, you know, and, and some small cities, they're like, nope, you'll do this, other, uh, other, do it the opposite. There, there, it's definitely not uniform.
Okay, so there really shouldn't be any risk if we decide that's the way we want to have that worded. Right?
And I, to be, I believe that's how it's been being done for at la, at least the last few hearings.
Okay.
Um, so I think they, part of the, um, the fee that's submitted with the building application kind of is being used to cover that, uh, cost of postage also.
Right, well, it's not, it's not an additional cost?
It's not, they pay for the abutters list, um, and then as the building department, we provide them the postage for the mailings. Uh, they're not required to be certified mail. Um, so it's just the cost of one stamp.
Um, Debbie, um, I'm kind of hearing you. I think it's much easier to offer the service to have the town send the abutter notices out, but at the same hand, it's the responsibility of the applicant. Is, is there a way to word that?
Yeah, that's sort of how I feel is, is I think it's their responsibility, but that the town will work with the applicant to accomplish that task or something like that.
Right, so, I mean, right, yeah. Um, it's by far simpler, um, but to step away from, well, the office, I mean, I'll make it up, the office was supposed to do that. Somebody else is supposed to do that.
Yeah, I just, I mean, to me.
And then it's our fault.
Well, yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's definitely our fault.
It's kind of an execution thing, right? I mean, having Kelly do it consistently versus everybody new who comes to the ZBA, it just, I, I think you're going to more consistently have that a button, a butters notified than you will if you're, you're making it, you're putting it on the, on the homeowner or the applicant.
My feelings on it also are that because there's a strict timeline to when it has to be sent out, um, you know, just working this past, these past few months with Saint Marks and kind of going through these steps, uh, it can be difficult to get the applicant to do things in the timeline that we need them to do it. Um, for example, the, uh, newspaper hearing notice that has to go out, that is now, um, the responsibility of the applicant completely, they have to, um, call the newspaper and have those notices, uh, put in and that's something that the newspaper, um, alerted us to. Um, and that's been, that was a little bit of a challenge or it can be, it, it gets a little bit, you know, did you reach out to this person and then they're saying yes, but the newspaper saying no and kind of, it, it, just being able to do it myself just streamlines it because I know that it's getting done and it's getting done within the timelines that the town requires.
And that's what I mean about one person doing it consistently versus any, every applicant who comes to the town hall. Like I understand.
And these costs are going to be covered by the.
Yeah.
Big fees, that's my only concern is it, it didn't work on.
Right, it should, it should be covered in the fees, correct.
You know, it's just, I, I don't know.
Yeah, and depend, depending on how many butters there are, I mean, it could be a lot of people. If it's, you know, a Saint Marks or one of these huge properties that has a lot of the butters.
It's the printer, the toner, that's the. I don't.
Certified mail. That's costly, it's, every time you go to certify.
Well, it doesn't, we don't believe it should also be certified.
It's not certified anymore.
We, we should remember that this has been the practice, so either we're changing the practice while we're changing the wording.
Right. Yeah, no, it has not been certified mail. Um,
Ever, no?
In the, it has, it has been, but not in the recent, uh, not recently, I would say.
David, I, I hear you, I think we're talking about changing the wording, uh, not budgeting the costs, so we'll kind of off draw from that thought.
Yeah, and, and, and again, remember, we're talking about the, the application, right? This is, we're not talking about state, you know, mandated language or, or, or zoning code, it's in an application, so.
Correct.
Okay. Was that it, was that it, Kelly, or was there anything anybody else wanted to have some discussion on?
Uh, that was all I had as far as that goes, um, I don't know if anybody else wants to add anything, but.
I mean, myself, I think I would probably have more to say with a written copy, like when you make that modification, you send it out. Certainly, I, I think that's just a better medium to look at that and make sure we all understand what, what you're trying to do.
Yeah, I'll work on that and then I'll send it out.
Okay. Okay, um, if we're set there, then the next item on the agenda was discussion of requirements for ten Jericho Hill Road variance. And I, is, is the, is the only question there, the requirement on a plan from the applicant?
So, um, that's the thing, um, we had a resident that inquired about, um, doing some, adding a shed to his property and it's directly on his property line. And his concern was that if he has, it, does he have to get a certified stamped, um, site plan? Because he feels as though it's going to, it's going to end up costing him more to do that than the cost of what he's trying to do. And so I don't know if this is something, one, that can even be discussed because he hasn't submitted anything to us, he keeps saying that he's going to, but I think the whole process might have deterred him. Um, so I know Mike had sent me an email, um, in regards to this, just stating, I can't, I printed it out, but I can't find it right now. Um, that.
You should.
Mortgage plot, plot plan?
In Massachusetts, when you purchase a home, title companies and the lender will require, uh, what's called a mortgage inspection plan, and so what they do is they take the recorded site plan, send an engineer on site, do a visual inspection of the property to look for any visible encroachments or issues. And they, they're pretty accurate, like, so for, for my home, my little post-stamped lot on Deerfoot Road, they're like, you've probably got an encroachment here, just, we don't know that, you'll have to get a survey, but, you know, we, and it was sixteen inches off, so, you know, they, they know what they're doing, um, and these, this is something I order every single day with purchases. So he'll either have them from his records, or if he doesn't, he can contact his closing attorney who did the purchase, his purchase, and they should have that record. His worst case scenario, uh, you know, I can give them, I can give you guys, you know, one, two, three of the engineer companies that we use, I mean, it's a reasonable, you know, it's, you know, a hundred and seventy-five dollars or, or what is what we're charged for them, so.
Okay. So I think I'll probably, um, reach out to him.
Yeah, and if he has any questions.
Yeah.
Reach out, but it, it should be in his closing package.
Yeah, I was, I was going to say, I think we've done this before where they don't have to get an engineer brand-new survey, like you, like you said, Mike.
I mean, that's typically.
Real money. Right, right, and that's, that's typically, like you said, it's part of the package. You know, worse comes to worse, they can go to the, uh, the, the Worcester County, uh, uh, Registry of Deeds and.
Right, pull up the recorded plan.
Right, right, yeah, yeah, I don't, I don't see the need to hire an engineer just to.
Definitely not.
Survey the property, that's, that's all we're killed.
I, I agree with that, I think, I think we've been here before with, you know, we, we've had like sketches on an envelope, remember? That we thought was like, that was a little too, you know, not good enough.
Exactly.
And then we've had like the four thousand dollar plan, which we don't need, yeah.
Then there was the swimming pool on like the, the side setback.
Oh, boy.
There was no, nothing done, so.
Yeah, so, but what would we be asking, like, in this situation, uh, we allow then the applicant to just sort of draw on the mortgage plan, plot plan, like, here's my shed ten by twelve and I measured it, okay, so we're really not asking that he spend a lot of money, that there should be a plan. And you know what, I have to say too, that I think we've also maybe had people go online to our GIS online. I don't know if that is suitable, but it's like woefully out of date, which is, I think it needs to be updated, but I don't know, would we accept a GIS if he just wants to go online and?
Just if I could interject that, I had the, the, the engineered plot plans are really the better way, just because a lot of times they're super dated. Uh, whether, we, we as closing attorneys don't use GIS or the recorded plan at the registry because there can be missing intervening documents. So typically, most people turn over their homes with some regularity and so those mortgage inspection plans for my seat is, is definitely worth more than even the registry of deeds or the GIS. Uh, those are, hey, if we don't have it, they refuse to order it, then let's check the plant, recorded plan, um, or the GIS at that point. Those should, I think should be our fallback position, the, the, the mortgage inspection plan. If they've purchased their house anytime within the last, like, I've been doing this twenty years, they should have, or should have access to it and already paid for it, in, in all seriousness.
Right.
And if not, they can contact their attorney and we send it to them.
Alright, so I'll, I'll reach back out to him and just let him know that he doesn't need.
Any questions, Kelly, just be like, hey, there's a guy on our board, this is breakfast, lunch and dinner for him in Waukesha.
Okay.
He may even have it in old email from his.
I guarantee you, if, 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 if he bought it recently, that's where it is, we send it.
I, I know that they've been there since at least two thousand and fifteen, um, because I went through.
They've got it, and if not, their attorneys got it, we did the, they just did.
Okay.
Alright. We good with that subject? Okay, uh, next item on the agenda, discussion of master plan committee updates. Debbie, what do you have to share with us?
Okay, so as you know, um, I'm the ad hoc, uh, ZBA appointee to the, um, I guess it's the two thousand and twenty or two thousand and twenty-one master plan. Um, and I just wanted to, um, just give you a quick snapshot. Um, I'm not sure, um, you know, if anybody's been following, um, with the minutes, uh, master plan committee, um, is quite a large group, actually. It's hosted by the planning board, Mimi La Trail runs the meetings. Um, and, um, essentially, I'm coming in at pretty much the end of the process, so they have, um, you know, quite a number of people have been working on it for a couple of years. So it started with a two thousand and nineteen vision survey and other, um, with input from boards and committees and departments. Um, other groups have additional surveys, like EDC has done surveys over the years, so using that input, they've basically, um, putting it into the master plan. So this is supposed to be a document that outlines not just the vision for the next ten years, but kind of introduces a little bit about like, what were the goals and objectives from the last ten years? And, and, and did we meet those, um, goals or, or what's been done in the last ten years? Um, just briefly, there are, uh, eight chapters, the first one is sort of a vision and goal, but the others are, uh, and this is a little bit different than past years, um, land use and zoning, housing, economic development, open space, natural resource and recreation, circulation and transportation, community historical and cultural and public services, resiliency and schools. So it's a little bit different than in the past. Um, another thing that they've tried to do is really, um, get the input from, you can tell this is going to be EDC, Shopsey, Planning Board, the schools, there's a lot of input that's gone into this, um, and to, um, really, uh, put together, uh, some goals and objectives for each of these, um, seven chapters that are, um, yes, that can be implemented essentially over the next ten years. And so just as an example, um, there's, um, for example, on land use and zoning that has come out of this process, there's fourteen recommended recommendations, four goals and fourteen recommendations. Um, in open space, there's sixty-one recommendations, uh, EDC has twenty-five recommendations, so. And the idea is to, um, uh, you know, finalize this master plan. I think that, um, they're hoping to have it, uh, by town meeting. Um, it's going to be available, I believe, in paper and also electronic. And each of these, um, uh, chapters are in the minutes, if you are looking to see, like, what is, what are these chapters looking like? Um, it is, there's a Google Drive that is included with the minutes and, you know, go in there and take a look. And a fun part of this right now is, um, there's going to be a, um, a photo kind of a contest, you know, to, to add photos to each of these chapters. Um, that's going to be advertised pretty soon, probably in, on the town website, blog and other places. Um, but it's really coming together and the idea is to have something by, uh, final and I, I believe it's going to be called the two thousand and twenty-one master plan, even though it's two thousand and twenty-two, because they almost made it. Um, it's an, it's a, it's been an enormous amount of work for the people, some people have been on it for the entire two years. Uh, and others have come off and come on, so there's, I would say dozens and dozens, I don't know how many people who have contributed. Um, and, yeah, and it's, I think it's, um, you know, I personally think it's, it's very nice, I think. I don't know if anybody remembers had the last master plan was written by a consultant and it was a huge undertaking and it was a hundred thousand dollars and a, a huge amount of time and work. And so this one, I think that the idea was, um, you know, it's, it, it hits more close to home, people are more closely held to it and they really were able to contribute to the goals, um, and the recommendations. And it was very, a lot of cross, you know, the, just the little pieces that I've been involved in is only, you know, a number of months. Um, is, there's, there's really been quite a lot of cross, uh, you know, uh, discussion from all members and coming up with like the suggestions to move forward, so, uh, yeah, so expect to see it pretty soon. It should be just before, I believe, just before, um, town meeting in May. Yeah, does any, anybody have any?
I vote that the ZBA image is like a confused angry person.
Well, I think they, you know, I, I know that, um, you know, some of, I think there's going to be some guidance on the photos. I mean, like, for example, on, uh, open space, you can imagine that there could be like, you know, a trail or, you know, Breakneck Hill or, or it could be a family taking a hike or something like that. So, I mean, I think it's going to be a lot of fun to see some of the photos coming in to, to go into the, uh, into the, um, final product, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks, Debbie, any?
Thanks for your time on that, Debbie.
Yeah, thank you, it, it, and it's been a lot of fun, as I said, I'm coming, I'm coming in at the end, there's people who have been really, really thinking through, um, you know, of, uh, trying to fix a lot of, uh, you know, looking for opportunities, I would say, fixing some things along the way, uh, making our communities, you know, better, more connected, and it's all based on a survey, um, to connect the neighborhoods and. Uh, making our communities, you know, better, more connected, and it's all based on a survey, um, to connect the neighborhoods and. Safety and, uh, really how we want to live in the next ten years, so pretty good stuff. Yeah, thanks.
All right, thank you, thanks, Debbie, any, anybody else with any comments or questions for Debbie?
Thank you.
Okay, then, um, all we have left is, uh, planning our next meeting. Do you, Kelly, are there any applications?
Um, so there should be a revised agenda. Um, there is a fifth. Uh, point on it that Debbie brought to my attention yesterday, it's board comments on Article twenty-eight.
Um. So I'll just give a little brief, um, introduction, I I think all the boards and committees received a message from Andrew Dennington. Um, having to do with, um, any, uh, sort of increased transparency on the boards and committees, if there's a change in. Um, any of their rules and regulations, um, that they posted, I think with, um, a fourteen day notice and. And open it to the public. Um, I I don't know how much that impacts the ZBA, but I suppose, as we were just talking about. You know, i- i- if we were to change a a procedure, maybe. If, I don't know if that's a rule, regulation, but you can imagine maybe we would open up to the public and. Kelly, are you able to bring it up?
Let me try doing that right now.
So, yeah, he's, um, he sent it out maybe a couple of, maybe a week and a half ago. And, um, there've been, I think they're gonna be closing the warrant pretty soon, and he's looking for feedback by the end of the month. And I just thought, you know, since we're meeting, um. You know, but maybe if anybody has any comments, it's a very short wa- warrant article.
All right, I'm pulling it up here.
Debbie, I did get it. Um. And I read it, so, um, but I didn't read it with the intention of making comments this evening, so can we see that on the screen?
Yes, can you see it?
Oh, you know, I'm gonna have to go get the bifocals maybe, but. Hold on. I have to get my bifocals.
And I think I had heard that he's received some comments, so this is the original note that went out. This isn't anything that's been revised, if he's if he's revised it, I don't know, but that might look like it.
So is this basically saying that anytime we want to change, like, the rules where we did that one time where we changed? Like, my role from. Vice chair to clerk or whatever and change the name, we have to hold a public hearing?
Well, would would it be? Is it more about the rules? I'm I'm trying to understand what the rules that they're talking about here as well, Craig. Does it have to do with what we consider a quorum, that kind of thing?
No, I think, I mean, we have, I mean, there's the zoning bylaws, the statutes. But then we have our, you know. Operating rules and regulations that we about, you know, we as a. You know, the chair per, you know, the chair is the person who runs the meetings. If the chair cannot make it, the chair assigns it to somebody else, you know, those sorts of things, like, it's. It's just kind of like our operating rules that don't. You know, like, one of the things we did is like. We changed it to allow Doris and Jamie to make comments. They can't vote if we have a full board, but they can make comments, we changed that as a rule and a regular, you know, as part of our rules and regulations.
Right.
Is. I. I don't think that that is. Necessarily public hearing related.
I'm I'm with you, like. We want to make a basic role change, we've got to have public meeting for that, like, I don't know.
I I I I didn't, I couldn't think of anything, to be honest, when I saw this, I I didn't think that, uh. I couldn't think of anything that applied to the ZBA. I think I might have heard the Board of Health say that they they might have, they might be making rules like about masks or social distancing. And if they, and and those are changing, right, so, and if they're changing, um, I think one of the.
Need to get my dad a whole bunch of new technology. But I'm hoping he's still frozen while I said that.
Well, one, one of the comments I think that they said is that, okay, if if they have to require masks, let's say because of the pandemic again. Then they can't have a fourteen day, um, you know, waiting period while the public meets. So I think, I I think I heard that at one of their meetings. Um, and so that, I think, is one of, like, that's that's within their purview, that's kind of like one of the. That's some rulemaking that they're allowed to do because of the role that they play. I couldn't think of anything, to be honest, um. For ZBA, I I mean, I was thinking, since we were talking about like whether a mortgage plot or a certified plot, like, let's say we change our rules. And we now say, oh, you have to have a certified, you know, plot plan. Well, that, which I don't think we would do, of course, because that's never been the process. But that might be something where, let's say, if a board tried to do something like that, that maybe they would want to let the public know. That, hey, we're gonna be changing this, it's it's gonna be now, we want to do this other thing, and you have a right to comment.
Yeah, I think, I think there's any rules or regulations seems very broad.
Right, because to to me, like, some of the, some of the rules and regulations by which we operate the meeting seem to me like. You know, that that doesn't have necessarily an impact on the public so much. Now, what Debbie just mentioned, if you said, well, we're gonna make it so that you have to get a engineer-stamped plot plan, that impacts the public. And I can see there being a hearing on that, but. The nor, just the operating sort of rules for a, for the meeting. I I would agree that, I can't see having a hearing on any change of that nature.
But then, like, just, this isn't our concern, but for instance, the mask policy, like Debbie said, you might not have two weeks to. Well, not have it, but it would be more prudent to do it immediately once the health board decides it's needed. And now they're basically saying you're not gonna be able to do that.
Yeah, I think that was one of the, um, that's the only comment that I I've heard so far about this, and Andrew might have others because he's collecting. Um, comments, I mean, and the intent is what I know is that it's, you know, to make it more transparent to the public when there is a rule change. I I have to say, as as one, you know, board member here on this board, I I don't really know of too many or. Any rules that really, you know, impact the public that we do, I mean, this is sort of, every committee and board has their own sort of like ways of doing work, you know? Um, where's the word all, Jamie, I think you said that.
It says any, prior to the option of, it's the second paragraph.
Yeah. Prior to the adoption of any rules or regulations.
Any rules.
Whether pursuant to state law or local by law, yeah.
We could suggest a different wording, I have problem, as as all of you have mentioned, this could slow things down. Terribly for administrative type rules, which is mostly what I've been seeing that we address. Uh, and then you say any rule, the definition is very broad, but maybe non-administrative rules, I mean, it's a suggestion.
I I think it's, you know, my view is that. Whenever we do that, we do it in our meeting.
Well, right.
You know, so it's on the agenda. We do it publicly. Every time we've ever discussed any of this stuff, we've done it publicly, it's just a matter of like. This whole official posting and, you know, all these other, I think that's, that part is. You know, not necessary, if people are concerned about what's going on in the ZBA, they can follow our meeting agendas, it will be posted.
Right. So do we, do we?
I'm on the same vein, I I'm already inundated with too much. I never know what's important anyways, and now we're gonna tell them about every, you know, everything that we do.
So if we had an agenda and it had a rule change, we'd have to have another meeting before we could put it on the agenda, I'm sorry.
No, that would be crazy, um.
Well, that's what that's, I mean, that's what you're leading it to.
Well, no, it's it's rules and regulations, I mean, I think you can clearly interpret rules and regulations. Um. Do we, uh, is is the feeling here that we just want to go, you know, go back to Andrew? And ask for some clarification, like, so when you say rules and regulations, does that apply to? The the rules we use for just operating the ZBA, as Craig mentioned? Uh, I mean, we could certainly look for some clarity there.
But my question is, does anyone know, you might know, what prompted this? Was was it the mask issue, like, why, why are they asking for this?
Yeah, I don't know, all I know is, you know, I got the email like everybody else, that just, you know, show some transparency. Um, I I don't think it was the mask issue, since it looked like Board of Health had, you know, concerns about this with the fourteen day. Uh, hearing for the types of rules that they make. Um, so I don't know what prompted, uh, but I mean, I do think that this kind of feedback would be good to give to Andrew. And I I do think, you know, that maybe it's that word any, that the types of things that we do on this board are. Um, administrative, so I I I can't imagine he's talking about administrative, he maybe he had something different. Um, that he was thinking.
Does you want a response from us as a board or us individually, what what's, what are we looking for here? Cause cause I'm I'm running tight on time to be.
Yeah, I I I I agree, Mike, I think, I think, I I mean, to me, that's what I'm looking for, I I think I can certainly respond and say. Uh, Andrew, we just, these are the, this is the question we have, does this apply to administrative rules that we apply in in how we, you know, run our meetings? Like, can we get clarity on what rules and regulations are? I would like to think Andrew, having been the on the ZBA for a long time and the chair. Would understand pretty clearly how that would apply to the ZBA.
And and I'm also curious. Like, how this came about? What what made them come to the decision that we needed this rule? Cause there's, there's got to be some reasoning behind it, and I'm.
Right.
Curious who it is.
Yeah, I can, I can, I'm I'm not opposed to asking that question as well.
Yeah, I think that would be great, I I can't really see that it applies, especially on it, I I don't imagine it applies to administrative. Um, procedure.
Think so, but I can ask for for clarity on that.
And maybe that's our point, that maybe that's what we clarify, that say that we, you hope that this, you know, we we wouldn't support that or. You know, we 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 think maybe that wording could be clarified, that any is too broad, it sounds like that's the kind of feeling or sentiment. Um. And maybe he's gotten that feedback from other boards too, so.
That's very, that's very possible.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Well, thanks for bringing, bringing that to my attention, I.
Yeah, I know, I would have missed it as well.
Yeah. Okay.
Thanks, Dave, so do you, do you, you're just gonna respond to Andrew then, Dave, you don't need anything else?
Yeah, I I think I've got it, I I think we're just looking for some clarification, can we clarify what rules this applies to? Does this apply to administrative rules that we'd normally use and how we operate, how we run our meetings? Uh, and then also just ask them, you know, can you just clarify what drove the need for this article? What's the driver that would necessitate such such a kind of broadly word article?
Yeah, and I mean, just thinking what Jamie was saying, I have to imagine that the, or one of the other other members was saying, I have to imagine it's some. Procedure that impacts the public somehow.
Right, right. I can't, I can't, I can't see the way we open and close, I mean, that's, that's internal, and how does that impact anybody, but.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
I think. I think that's good unless somebody had somebody else, something else they wanted to throw in there. Um, we don't have Paul with us, and we know the valuable function that Paul performs at this stage of the meeting, so.
Well, I did hear from Paul.
Oh.
Uh, he's down on the Cape, he he was in a meeting that ran long and the the connection down there is spotty, so he was having trouble getting it. So I told him not to worry.
Okay.
Uh, did we confirm that our next meeting is the twenty-seventh?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, then I will take Paul's spot if no one minds.
Um, I just have one thing to say about the twenty-seventh, um, so we skipped our February meeting because we didn't have anything on the agenda. However, um, I did receive a notice that the meeting minutes had not been received. From the January meeting within a certain, uh, timeline, which was forty-five days. Um, which I believe is something new, because we went from October to January with no minutes being posted. Um, so even if we do just a quick meeting to, um, get the minutes from this meeting. Posted, I think that's in the best interest so that we're not.
Okay.
Behind on that.
I think that's okay, yeah.
Okay.
All right, Craig, now you're up.
Okay, I move to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
I second.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn in a second, all in favor, respond with aye. Doris?
Aye.
Debbie?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
All right, William's aye. Great, thanks very much.
See you all.
Bye.
Take care, good evening.
Bye.